Yeah, let me check. She's usually like right here. Just get a couple minutes. Let's see if I got a response. Truck just pulled in, let's see if it's her. Does she drive a truck? Let me know where the flag is in. Or is there one outside? That's a nice day. I just texted and she didn't respond back. I didn't get a response, so we'll just go ahead and start the meeting without her. And then when she comes in, we'll just have her in from there. Just waiting for a flag to open the meeting. There she is.
Oh, there she is.
I mean, it said just ding your phone, didn't it? Uh, no, we're waiting for a flag. Can't they please fly a flag? I don't know. Is there one outside?
Isn't there one coming right there?
Is there one flying outside? We can just face that thing.
Is it out this way? The flag?
I don't. Well, is the flag outside Eric? Is there one flying outside? Then we'll just face that one. Okay, then we'll start the meeting by saying the flag. The flag, as we know, is not that way.
It's outside. Pretend you can see it.
Yeah, here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leslie Henley?
Here.
Tom Ahern?
Here.
Kent Dunbar?
Here.
Barb Garber?
Here.
Ken Riley?
Here.
Tammy Wareham? Absent. Steve Weaver?
Here.
Bert Martyr?
Here.
Bert Dunsmore? Absent. Motion to ex-
I'll make a motion to excuse the absence of, uh-
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Adoption of, um, the meeting agenda. I want to make a motion on that to add the bylaws to the old business section of a bit of a bylaw discussion. Is it all in favor?
What do you want to put it on?
On unfinished business.
Unfinished business number three?
Number three, yes, bylaws.
Probably add that to the, uh, management agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Um, the approval of meeting minutes from April 26th. I just want to make a change to that to say that it was, um, I hope we can finish two, three, and four.
You have to speak up louder. We can't hear you back here.
Oh, sorry about that.
You can move closer if you'd like.
To change the, um, the two, three, and four on our planning, on our plan to May 17th, not May 10th. But I didn't think we were going to be discussing that on May 10th.
It's the meeting after the public hearing on May 10th. So that's a little confusing, but it is.
Oh, then we're fine.
Yeah.
Then we're fine.
So we don't need to make that change?
We don't need to make a change. So-
On the minutes. Well, then I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes from April 26th as presented.
And I'll second that.
All approvals?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you have one?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. Any citizens' comments about the agenda, not relating to the, uh, public hearing?
So-
Do you have any attenders?
Well, so what it is, is non-agenda items. So if you don't have anything that's on the, anything that you want to talk about that's not on the agenda, now is your time to speak about otherwise the rest of his agenda items, which is a public hearing, and I'm sure that's why your folks are here, right?
Okay, communications. Did everybody get the letter from Larry? Is that something we need to read out loud? Or is that just for our-
Uh, I-
It was information only, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It seemed to be.
I thought that was the email that was information only.
Yeah.
Which is a-
Well, I'm talking about, yeah, the, um, the one from Larry Wilson?
Right.
Okay. And then we also had, um, Ken Dunmar, Dunmar, the email transcription from about the bylaws, which we can discuss under an old business.
Under unfinished-
Anything else? Yeah. Okay, and we, um-
Well, you know, well, I'm sorry, I'm just, I went back a little bit.
Okay.
Maybe this is something that should be read as a communication. It's not stamped for information only.
Yeah, that would be the email. So, okay, yeah, so-
And this is to, uh, you know, our chair, Leslie, and the Planning Commission. Leslie, did you want to read this, or?
Um, I can read that.
The letter?
Yep. Statewide is requesting a zoning change on parcel number 040302151007, consisting of 8.623 acres from R1A single-family residence to RM residential multiple. A brief history. This is from Larry Wilson. Bart Dunsmore and I were contacted by Statewide Management Group in 2020 on this project. We had two informal meetings. In February 2021, we had a formal meeting to discuss the project. In attendance were four representing from statewide and four from Memphis. Eric Schneider, Jason Sofa, Bart Dunsmore, and Larry Wilson. Phase one of the used 7.19 acres of a total of 15.85 acres to build seven single-family homes on Bell River Road and six on Pratt. This was approved by Memphis Planning Commission after a public hearing and the council, and is in the process of being built. Phase two, the balance of 8.623 acres would be a future development with a combination of a condominium slash apartment complex. They are now requesting the change in zoning to allow the development of phase two. It is my opinion their request should be granted. I realize this is up to the Planning Commission as a whole, and I respect your opinion. I am requesting the Memphis Planning Commission recommendation to council approve the zoning change of this parcel to be changed from R1A single-family residential to RM residential multiple. Thank you, Larry Wilson, council member. A note. Note one, statewide will be submitting a more formal design and an application for site plan approval when the zone and when and if the zoning request is granted. Number two, I believe condo-type homes are needed in Memphis.
Um, can I make a motion that this, uh, be put on file as communications?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So I see them pay a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is open. Did we have a list of people we wanted to-
Does anybody like to speak?
Talk, or you want to-
State your name.
Christopher Manzik. I do, I have, I have two concerns with it. I don't have, I, I don't really have a problem with the rezoning as multifamily and doing a condo development, but I do have an issue with them putting, um, apartments in there. I mean, that would, that would sandwich our house right between two apartment complexes. Uh, we already have an issue with, um, the apartment complex that's currently there that walks across our back section of our yard. I don't know when they do it, I never catch them. I just know that I put the fence back up and it's down again. I found a ladder going over the fence before, you know, and I have an issue with that. I also don't think that, uh, apartments is a, I don't really think putting more apartments in Memphis is a great idea. I mean, how are apartments going to impact with taxes? I believe the residential houses or condos will be a better, uh, tax revenue for the city than condos would be. Uh, they also put more of a depletion on the school systems because the tax revenue versus the number of kids will normally outweigh, or the, the number of kids will normally outweigh the tax revenue that comes from an apartment complex. Um, and also as the economy goes down, you never really know what you're going to get in an apartment complex. And a lot of areas where you notice a lot of renters, a lot of renters don't take care of their property. It's not theirs, they don't really care about it. So I really, I'm, I'm, I just would like it on record. I understand that to do condos, it would have to be zoned multifamily, and I have no problem with that, but I'd like it on record that there's no intention of putting an apartment complex there. My other concern with the phase two is the fact that they plan on putting a road right against our property. I would also like a commitment that they're also going to put a fence up with that road. Uh, primarily a privacy fence for the portion that's by our house in our garage, and then it could be cycloned the rest of the way. Because I understand there's a cost involved in that. But I also don't want the headlights from the traffic on the road, and I don't want people just walking over onto our property. And because there was not a road there before, it was a corn farm, I don't think it should be my responsibility to put that in to keep my property secured.
Where'd you go, what did you?
Uh, right next door, 804-61 Bell River. And those are my major concerns with that. Other than that, I think it's great, I think it'd be great. I think houses would be better, but I also understand condos and condos aren't too bad.
I'm Chris's wife, Tina, and I agree with everything you said. I believe that condos are a better option because I myself have a single daughter, and I think condos are more affordable for single mothers or single fathers, I'm not going to be sexist here, but an apartment is unacceptable. I, I think passing it with a caveat of absolutely no apartments, and, and I have to give them kudos. They spoke with us after the meeting, they know that we live next door, they've been very kind to us. I mean, everything that has been said in work, and I'm going to stick up for them. They, they were very kind to speak with us, knowing that we are the neighbors, but I would like it in writing that they're going to do these things. Because I think, not, listen, I'm not calling you guys untrustworthy at all, but the point here is, is I can say I'm going to do something, but I don't have to unless it's in a contract. I don't think I'm asking for much for a little bit of privacy, a little bit of garbage control, a little bit of noise control, um, you know, the lights in my windows, you know, a road, listen, I, I, I bought a house next door to a 16-acre cornfield, it was wonderful. I knew that that property could be sold, yes, I'm not stupid. But there has to be some agreement between, we're neighbors. So, like, I think condos are a great idea. I think they're right back there by the baseball fields, I think there's going to, you know, I think a park going back there by that, the pond or, and I don't want to call it a pond, the retaining, the retention, you know, as long as there's, but if we're going to build and make our city nice and make maybe even a dog park in that area, something for our city, but it has to be safe, and, and they have to consider the neighbors that have lived here.
The other thing with it is that condos at least promotes ownership.
Yes.
Most people, they're going to buy a condo, they're going to buy it.
Right.
I mean, it's always, it's always possible they could rent it out, I understand that, but, but an apartment is definitely not ownership. And as the economy goes down, you know, the, the requirements to rent there might get lax because they got to meet the number of, um, you know, how many units to make, to break even and make a profit. I just think it's a bad idea for apartments, and I think that the condos is fine, I'm all, I'm all for the condos, just not apartments.
I agree.
I would like to say-
Anybody else?
I would like to say that definitely what, um, was said already is, oh, Kim Guns, I, I know. Um, I, I agree that condos would be great. When we found out that it was going to no longer be farmland, we were sad, but, um, to have condos, there's so many good people in this town who have big houses, and they're not going to want to live in them forever. And they would love to buy a condo back there and be able to stay in Memphis and sell their home to a family that could then enjoy it. Um, but with the apartments, we see what happened with the ones that are on the other side of the Tina and Chris's house. They went down. It took many years for them to go down, but it's just not what it originally was or what it was originally built to be, and we'd hate to see that over there, especially with it, um, being so close to our schools and our soccer fields and our baseball fields. Um, having homes that are owned, be it homes or condos, we would be okay with, but another apartment, how many apartments does a one-square-mile town really need in it? There always seems to be apartments available to rent here. And we have no condos, we've never had condos, and I think that would be really nice if they could do that.
I think it would be a draw to our town because Richmond does have a set, a couple areas of condos, and they are kept up very nice, they're beautiful. I have friends that live in them, they're very nice, but it's an ownership, and I think we need to be looking at ownership. I think Memphis is an older town. I, I have not been here forever, I've been here five years, but I plan on staying here. So, and I, I mean, I, let, let's ask them. I mean, I'll tell you what I'm afraid of. And I'm just going to say it, and you can turn around and laugh at me, I don't care. Uh, they're going to, they're going to rezone it and sell it because the economy is about to hit rock bottom. Let's be honest, everybody in this room knows that it's going to, maybe it's coming, and if you don't, I'm sorry for you. But that's coming. The interest rates are going up, so I'm afraid they want to rezone it and sell it. And then they can do what, you know, almost anything they want. I mean, let's just ask them, do you plan on putting apartments there, or do you plan on putting condos there?
No, we don't want to put apartments, that wasn't our goal to begin with.
Okay, and I'm not, and I'm not being mean, I think I'm, I'm making very fair statements.
We, we don't want rentals, um, ourselves, we're not equipped for that. In my, in my company, I have another-
Say your name.
Mike Demille, statewide management. Mike Demille, statewide management. In my company, I do have a rental division, but it's not for residential, it's commercial industrial. And frankly, it's a pain in the butt having apartments in all-
I agree.
It's not our bag. It works for some, but not for us. We are looking for the condos. We have a great builder, Mark, he is a partner in this, he wants to take that off and move forward. He is in the process, well, take your thunder, but you're going to be pulling four new permits within, five new permits within-
Three months, yeah, three weeks to a month.
Three weeks to a month.
Can you, can you describe the type of condos you want to build?
Um, maybe Mark can, I can't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so can I ask, your plan is to proceed with going to condos, if this is-
That's accurate. That's correct.
So,
frankly, we, and I'm not nothing against the town, right? I like Memphis, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Right.
But the truth of the matter is, an apartment, if you're going to do that, if you want to build it down in the city where you can get maybe, well, on Hall Road, for instance, I was told, not firsthand, but I was told by an individual that knows the people that built an apartment right by the Walmart, they're getting $2,000 for a two-bedroom apartment. Not going to get $2,000 or anywhere near that up here. So, the value of building is the same whether it's there or here, so where would you build? Build there, not here, for that kind of building, but we're not building that kind of building.
But there's also people who, they have a lot of money and they build, and it could be that you go ahead and put the apartments in, like what happened with the other ones, and they, they aren't making money, and then you want to get rid of them, and you just sell them off and you write, it's a write-off because it's, you can afford to do, I'm not saying you, but you can afford to do that, so you do.
I, I hear that a lot, though, the write-offs and stuff, and I always say, well, you got to have write-ons before you have write-offs. You got to make a little money before you can get something to take your money away.
Well, um, I'm hoping you appreciate-
I, I, I'm Cynthia Leggett, and we live on Lois, we've been here for 30-some years. And we feel the same way you do, we know behind us there's possibly a building going, but I agree with these folks 100%. Apartments are definitely not the way to go. We moved here because it's a small town, we love this place, we've got that distillery or whatever that thing is. Our children, we don't need to put that. If people need places to live, that's great. But we need to make sure that our properties are still going to be valuable. You know, these houses that went up over here, what a nice thing. I mean, they really are some beautiful homes. So, that's what we want. We want, we want this town to be known for not trash, not garbage, not, not the place to just land your butt because you need a place to live and it's cheap. I just, I, I agree with these people wholeheartedly. This is, uh, it's very hard on us because, you know, we've got a lot invested in this town, you know, with living here, and it's just, it's just really sad to see that apartments, no, I don't think so. We could have bought a home near where the apartments were when we first moved here, and we, we decided, no, we don't want that. I don't want somebody in my backyard looking in my window, cutting through my property. I, I agree with this guy, that's, that's horrible, you know? So I hope that, uh, this is something, I know there's not a huge crowd here, but I hope that it goes somewhere that we're, we're heard, you know? And, and really taken wholeheartedly and not like, not like COVID where everybody got dismissed with some of the decisions-
Put under the rug.
Yeah.
Lot of things.
So, it's, it's something that if, if I have to go out and get people and talk to the neighbors and that, I, I will, you know, I, I, I really am invested in this place. So, I-
That's why we moved here, it's a great place to live and visit.
And our daughter, we raised our daughter here, and, you know, it's just, it's so peaceful. We, you know, you just-
It is.
You enjoy it, it's just, I, I love listening to the cows, you know, it's like, people don't understand that, I work out at 23 and Grasha, and it's such a madhouse out there, I can't wait to drive home and just enjoy where I'm at. So, I really truly hope that you guys listen to us, and we've got a say in this.
Thank you, Cynthia.
One thing, I want to comment on that I, I forgot to, is also that I, my previous house that I lived in was actually backed up against apartment buildings. And I know I did have a conversation with him, Mike, about this, and he did say that it's not his intention to do apartments. And I just, like I said, I mean, I, you know, Ronald Reagan said, trust but verify. You know, I just would like it on the record that there's not going to be apartments put there. Uh, but my thing, my point was, is that even when I was selling my other house that was butted up against apartments, um, I got $10,000, $20,000 less just because the apartments were there. Everyone would come in and say, this is a great house, but I don't like the apartments. And, and as I knew, because I lived there for 20 years, the apartments went up and down depending on the economy. When the economy was good, there was a good class of people living there. When the economy went to shit, well, you started having fights there, you started having violence there, and then when the economy went up again, it started coming, you got a better class again, so it just went up and down. And, but with homeownership or condo ownership, either way, at least there's investment in there. And, you know, from the owners of it. So, and again, I also would like the fence still with the road.
Well, you know, again, as we mentioned, my own, my, my beliefs in this stuff is Memphis doesn't need apartments, they've got enough, I think. You know, we're not stupid, we've been doing this for a long time. Memphis needs condos, there is none, there's none. So, we see an opportunity, we see an itch, yeah, we're selfish, sure, but that's what we think the right place, way is to go. We don't think apartments is the right way to go in a town that really doesn't need them. So, that's my thought on it, and Mike-
That's true. The, the, uh, the thing about doing what we do is it's a very long-term plan. It doesn't happen overnight, as you proved out, we started this in '20. Um, we have total four houses built so far, we have five coming on real soon, it's going to be pulling permits. And hopefully, maybe if that goes well, maybe, and we can get another round of permits before the end of the year, maybe finish up that side. In the meantime, if you approve this, we will get engineering involved and start drafting and start going to build the infrastructure, and then we can start building our condos. However, the timeline, which I hope you're wrong about the economy, because it's-
I'm just honest.
It's going to take about a year for us to get from a planning stage to get, and you guys probably can back that up on different things that you've done already. It takes a long time to get that, you know, through the board, get everything proved, and then get it built, and then start building the structures, so, um, yeah, I mean, I don't think we're making a mistake, whatever, being here and doing it here, I think this is a good spot, I think that they will sell. They are, um, in, in, if it does turn to be a downturn, yes, that would be devastating because we'd have probably a million and a half, maybe 2 million in the infrastructure. I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking by the time we put the water, the sewer, the roads, slightly, whatever else we got to put in there, it'll probably be that much. If it's a short-term, great, if it's a long-term, yeah, we'll have to weather the storm itself, so, but it's not going to be any different here than it would be over here, over there, over there, we've got several developments going on, and it is what it is, I mean, you're in or you're out, and we're in, so.
Just sort of clarification here, it's one of those things, the notice that went out about this public hearing, the way that it's stated here is to change it from R1A single-family residential to residential multiple to construct multifamily residence such as duplex, triplex, fiveplex homes or apartments, and nowhere in here mentions condominiums, which I believe has been your plan all along.
That's correct.
And I'll be full on board with supporting all you people, the pride of ownership in not having apartment buildings, condominiums, you're going to have pride of ownership, plus you're going to have oversee by a board on what's done in there.
Who has more to lose if we put millions of dollars here and we end up burning it up?
But you understand that life doesn't stay condo, no.
No, it does, that's, that's just for clarification, nowhere in here does it stay condo, and so you know that these gentlemen, that's what they planned all along, was condominiums. That was what they presented to the planning, that's what they presented to City Council.
Called us all and told us to be the state board.
Well, let me think, so, but, but with that said, that's why, like you just said, it is a long-term thing. If the economy did, and right now apartments don't make sense, but maybe a year from now they might. And by zoning it this way right now, it would allow apartments to be built there. And what I'm asking that is when it is zoned, it has a deed restriction on it, or maybe not a deed restriction, that apartments can't be put there.
Right.
I don't believe that we can do that, let's change it to our, uh, residential multiple, our, yeah, our, um-
I think we have a-.
I don't understand, if these gentlemen are agreed to it, caveat as it progresses, it's a simple thing to do, we're on record right now. And like Mike said, you know, part of the, the long-term project is the whole planning thing, so we have to create the infrastructure, the drawings, you know, where the road's going to be, and we also have to come back to these folks-
And we also have to come back to these folks who said, this is what they're gonna look like. They're gonna approve it or not approve it. So it's not like, we can just do whatever we want. It's a, it's a long process.
And of course, we're not gonna be able to build 60 units. That's our anticipation, that we can build 60 units there. That'll probably take another five or six years if we're lucky to build 10 a year. And that's with good economy. So, it might, it might take us seven, eight years, nine years to build that up.
But I hope you appreciate the concern and our taking offense. It's just, it's just the concern.
We're with you.
So, we're part of the community, not like you are. We're invested.
So, did you have something to say?
Yes, I'm sorry, Heather Perry.
Go ahead.
So, phase one, originally when you guys did this, and phase one obviously was coming before phase two, but phase, phase one isn't done yet. So why are you rushing into doing?
Because it takes a year in paperwork to get to the point of building. I just did one in grand light. We started 15 months ago. We had the actual set of drawings delivered to us, I think upon the last meeting I was here. We finally got the set of drawings. This was like 13 and a half months in the making. Today, I thought I would actually have bids and ready to go to work, that I could issue contracts. Not today. It's not the economy that we're in, it's not the world that we're in. It just takes forever to get anything done. It's the truth. Right now, we're on the 15th month, and I don't have a contractor. I don't even have a bid. I'm asking for bids. It's just, it takes, it just takes time. It just takes so much time.
So, the, the property on Pratt Road that was supposed to have, I think, I believe, six houses on it?
Yeah, and a sidewalk.
Is that still gonna happen?
Those are the next permits for quoting. We're gonna do lot five, which is the last lot, I shouldn't say the last lot, the last lot in the row.
So that's over by the baseball field?
There's the one, yeah, there's the one in between the old farmhouse and the homes at front Pratt. But we're gonna do four over along Pratt Road is our next.
Okay, so I'm right here. Our house is the last one, where you're before the field.
Okay. You face Pratt?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're putting one behind our house as well then?
No.
In that empty property? That's gonna stay empty? Will that be a road?
Well, behind you, that is, no, that is a lot, but we're not building on that lot right now.
Okay.
That's not the next, that'll be the, the next, next phase.
So hopefully, by the end of the year.
All of them will be built out.
It takes, as you know, six to eight months to build a house, right? So, we're hoping somewhere in that timeline that one, two, five sell, and then we will be ready to do the next batch.
Is there any concern that those houses will not sell? And you'll be left with empty houses?
The biggest thing was getting them to appraise.
Yeah, that was our fear.
I mean, we didn't know. But they, they are appraising, and they are selling, and we are happy. So, yeah.
Because as you folks know, I mean, yes, lumber came back down to a normal rate. Nothing else has. Everything else is still sky-high prices, so are we making, killing the fact out? No, not by any means. It's, it's a struggle to get there, and we feel, you know, we're invested, like Mike said. We've got our money, our own personal money tied up in this project. We're gonna need to work.
Yeah, I just felt, like them, I mean, we'd be right next to, I didn't know if you planned on putting a road right there.
No, 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 that's a lot. The one between the old farmhouse and the backup that your folks holds.
But right directly next to us?
Is also a lot. Would be next to you on the west side, towards the school? Yes, that's a lot.
Well, that would be us there too.
And then there's three, on the other side of Bell River, right across from the first homes we built, there's three lots there. And there's still a piece.
Yeah, coming off of, I forget what the name of the road is, but it deadens.
In the sub there.
Yeah, it deadens onto the property, and we plan on developing that as well. I'm sorry, you've been trying to say something.
On the east side, on the east side of Bell River, you have a quarter house?
There's three houses on the east side, there's three lots.
That's your next?
No, not next, not next, but soon. We want to finish off Bell River, or I should say, west side of Bell River and Pratt first. Then we'll go across the street, finish those five homes.
Right.
It concerns me that you're gonna start building condos. I know it's gonna be a while, but you'll be building condos and that east side of Bell River is gonna look like it does today. And that's a concern.
Well, you'll, you'll be able to know for sure, we're gonna be spending money on permits within the next three weeks on getting five more homes started. So it won't look like that today. It could be in maybe 90 days, because he should have by that time foundations going in. Basement's going up, so.
But the five permits are not for East Bell River.
No, no, no.
No, no, that's going on Pratt, but.
I would think that would probably be spring, if I look at that. A year from now, that side. Because I still have, what, one, seven?
Where's 15th hole?
I got eight, nine to build out yet this year.
Right.
To finish off Bell River.
And then we have the other side. But because it takes so long on paperwork and the process, and it's not anybody's fault, it just takes time. So, by the time the engineer drafts it, resubmit it to your engineers, your engineers review it, and then make comment, and then he's gotta fix it, and then send it. But it takes months and months and months. So then finally we get, you know, once we get the approval, if we do get the approval from you to do this, it's another year in paper. What we're saying is the timeline kind of fits. If things continue the way the economy is, about a year plus out, we probably will be out of lots to build up, is what we're hoping. I mean, doesn't mean well, but that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, we're certainly all hoping for it.
And then, then we would be on the next.
It just, I just, I guess I'm looking for assurance that the houses will all be built before you build condos.
I would like assurance too, but there is none. I don't have any, I mean, I'd love it, to be honest with you. The truth is, I would, I would love some assurance, but it's all out of our pocket, it's all fake.
But it's your bucket, but it's your money. Where are you gonna put your money? You're gonna put it in those condos if the houses aren't selling? And then we have all these empty grassy lots.
To be honest with you, if the houses drop off and don't sell, we're sure not gonna start a condo project. What's gonna make them sell versus if the houses sell?
Because condos should be cheaper, so I would think they would sell.
Not a lot. They're not much cheaper.
No, they're really not.
Really not.
They're a little less intact, so a little less, you know, they're incrementally more economical, but just incrementally, I mean, it's not a lot, but it's not like 100 grand cheaper.
But you have all, all that infield, we have to put a road. Mike can tell you how much a square foot it is.
It's about 700 a foot. So, there's gonna be about a million and a half dollars in infrastructure.
So that has.
If we're gonna make a dime, we gotta, we gotta profit that much. About three-quarters of that has to be built out and sold for us to get our infrastructure back. Am I rushing to do that? No, but yes, because again, I don't have a roadmap. I don't know what is gonna happen, but I do believe if I don't do it, you know, what I'm gonna have is zero. I mean, I.
But you know, Doug, do you see my point?
No, no, I understand, exactly. But I hope you understand where we're at.
The way that east side of Bell River looks, I don't want it to look like that. And, and two years from now, you're building, and you're building condos back there.
Are you in the market for a house? No, I understand what you're saying, Tony. I do understand. It's just we don't have assurances ourselves of really anything, honestly. I mean, is, is what she mentioned earlier, is the economy gonna die? I don't know. I mean, if it does, yeah, we're sunk. I don't know, it's gotta wait, that's all. We gotta weather the storm of your veils. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just, I think Barb was talking about how torn up our sidewalks are, and our road is quite damaged, you know, when they did all that cutting off to do all the, I understand they put the electric in, and the sewer, and the water, but we were shocked by the sidewalks, and now lots of times when you're walking, they're very muddy.
Well, that sidewalk, we're actually, when they poured lot three driveway, they're gonna repair that sidewalk, because that was damaged by the concrete company. So it's actually, it's, we're gonna fix it, even though we're gonna end up cutting it back out to put driveways in.
Yeah.
We're gonna, it's, it's gonna be repaired probably within the next three weeks.
Oh, that's nice.
They'll all be repaired.
And where the sewer went out?
Yeah, the sewer took out part of it, but the back, the concrete truck, when they poured lot one and two and four, back right over the, he's an idiot, so they're actually paying to have it repaired. So when they pour that third driveway, lot three driveway, they're gonna fix that sidewalk.
You're talking about where the dump service?
Yeah.
The sidewalks are all cracked.
That's where the concrete truck drove right over it, and they're, you know, they're 80.
And then that other spot where you put the sewers in, that's gone.
That's gonna be all repaired, taken out and repaired. And like I said, probably be two to three weeks, we gotta pour that driveway.
We would love to wait, but we know that it's inconvenience, and we'll.
It's not right.
Me and my daughter appreciate it.
Yeah, no, we're taking, we're redoing it.
We walk there every day.
And I'm gonna end up tearing that brand-new concrete out when I put the driveways in, but.
It is what it is. Costs a big business, that's all I'm saying.
I just, we, I just don't wanna see, I just don't wanna see 10-foot irons and condos going out, and there's 10-foot irons inside of Bell River. And there's empty lots that are just.
And again, I have no intention in putting my neck out there to start building condos until we get these houses done. If the houses don't sell, condos aren't gonna sell. It just doesn't make sense.
Do we have any more comments?
Well, I came along too, but you know, I would just share the same thing of, you know, we need to just stress, again, the ownership of the community. And this may not be the one to discuss, but I would also have a concern about just simply the density of these condos, because where we are, we're gonna end up living on an intersection where it comes out, and, you know, that's, that's just a concern of, you know, we have a nice quiet road, and now we live on an intersection.
So, back to the fence and the noise reduction, how do you feel about that? I'm pretty blown, I don't care, I'm sorry.
I think that is something that is.
We address that already.
That's not an other item, as far as not.
We address that.
Um, wait, um, do I have a motion to close public hearing if we have no more comments?
I'll make the motion if we're public.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stick around for some review of the master plan and updating more language, if you'd like.
Sounds excited. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Hey, thanks everybody for coming.
Take a short break?
Yeah.
Short break? I don't know, I don't think we'll finish business. We have. Oh, we do have. Yes. We have to hold on.
He's got the horsepower, huh?
Well, the adjusters are, you said they're.
The end of the, the next is the perfect. It's directly behind me, and maybe it used to be like.
Do you want, like, it's easy?
Behind, it's beautiful. After I buy it, I'm gonna start painting it up. No, you know, that's the thing, it's.
It's very particular to the red student. Remember, I did. School. School, or build school, huh? Yeah, it's always. Out there, when you're going to school now, you got three, four, five. We gotta find some ways to.
Isn't that owned by somebody out of Canada or someone? I live right from Dunbar School, isn't that owned by somebody from Canada?
That's my new point, but jot it out, unless somebody knows, knows the answer to the question, what percentage of Memphis is apartments?
Well, you have the ones right on the south end of town, you have the ones behind the church, you got the school buildings, you got the.
Bus station.
Well, you got a few.
Hendrick Street is the worst. Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, Henderson.
You know, because that's Kreiderman's special people. And that is always the issue is.
Look at me, folks.
Is there, you know, is there anything that we can, is there, is there any way that Memphis?
And there's been a lot of issues. Oh, that's what, there was a homicide, they're not that long.
Can Memphis put a cap on the number of apartments that are in, in, in usability?
What if we just created a new zone?
They gotta be proposed, you gotta have plans. Yeah, guess what, that's gonna be, you know.
There's no more reason to do that. I mean, we just.
Well, if anybody, and if, if anybody comes to the city as, you know, put up apartments, we can just say no. Not if it's residential multiple, though.
If it's, but that's what I was saying, it's residential multiple, if we, if, same we do make a residential multiple, okay? And their plan, like, carries through whatever bus we're taking them afterward. They saw the property out, now it's already zoned for RM. Doesn't the next set of buyers or developers have to still come back to us for approval of plans? And we can say, so we have written a permit supplement. No. We can stop that from happening.
We can't leave the world, that's what he's saying, I don't think we can.
You were making recommendations to the council that it cannot be approved, but if it's zoned for residential multiple, and the thing is, this is the sticky border, you know, it's one of those. We're gonna, you know, hopefully, you know, rezone this to residential multiples so they can move forward with their project.
Right.
And, you know, hopefully, everything doesn't fall apart, and they just say, and walk away. I mean, so this happened with the 13 acres on the far north end of town, on the west side of the road, there's 13 acres there. That was zoned for, that was zoned for mobile home use. And we had, somebody came to us, and Barb, you probably remember, the guy had beautiful plans.
I remember.
For condominiums, for out there, and it was spectacular. And he kind of took crap, and it was a few dollars. And before, he packed up and he left. Okay, so, you know.
He sold the property.
Yeah, he sold it, and the guy bought it to hunt on, and then he found out that he couldn't shoot it out of Memphis, and so he sold it. And then the guy that bought it thought that he was gonna grow weed out there. He didn't get approval for it, so there it sits out. You know, I mean, as well as, like, so when we changed that to residential multiple to put condos in, well, the thing is, is we had to find another place to put mobile home use, because you have to, part of the city is zoned for mobile home use. So, we took this, this back piece back behind Steve's house and zoned it for mobile home use. And we took, I don't know, like, nine acres or something like that, because it was the least amount of property that would fit 51 mobile homes. And the Lions, a few that were there, came to council and said, hey, what the hell? Damn planet.
We just need to be proactive.
And the thing was, is like, just don't sell it.
Well, there was, I mean, there was nowhere else. There was nowhere else.
And the thing is, is if we didn't have anything to do with mobile home use at the time, the state could've stepped in, picked a giant piece of property that would've taken 300 mobile homes. And that crushes the community, it crushes the schools.
Drops the property value down significantly.
Anyways.
So if we make this RM, and, you know, and everything's gonna go for it, probably, the way they're doing it, we're hoping. But if we were trying to look at it proactively, like, worst-case scenario, that now it's sitting RM and some, and somebody who, who you're saying Kreiderman, that's the thing, it's got to be apartments, say he decides he wants to put up some more of those right there. Because how do we stop that without having a law? Will there be a lawsuit if somebody wants to come in and put an apartment in that spot?
Can the zoning change if it's sold? Can we have a.
That was the question I had too.
If this property is sold, the zoning goes back.
Because I wondered if your zoning could follow, it follows you at all concerning a property, like if.
Isn't it, isn't it?
Zoning follows the land.
You know, I've heard about municipalities saying, so that people don't drop the ball, or whatever, that if there's no, if there's no action, if they rezonate and there's no action in a certain amount of time, it reverts back to the old zoning.
I, I don't know.
We don't have specific language for that. Somebody would request it and we just go through the normal chants, we've done that forever.
Zoning that RM is, I don't see a problem with making it.
I don't.
No, I don't either.
I don't.
They're never going to submit a plan.
So, we need to get back on track because you know what, we need to, uh, send a recommendation to city council on this.
Right, yes we do.
So, we need to get back on track with this meeting.
I'll make the motion, we, uh, change the zoning to RM.
But to be clear on what happens, I'm.
With the expectation that condominiums will be built instead of apartments, put that in, Barb.
I like that, I'll second that.
So, do, do, why don't you restate this so Mr. Dunbar can put that in.
That's a, that's a conditional recommendation though, right?
And I don't think you can do that.
And that's where I was saying like.
With the understanding, I mean, why not? This is what they said.
Do we have?
Making record, they go, what did they?
But you, I don't think you can put it unconditionally.
With the understanding, it's not a condition.
Yeah, it's not a condition, it's just understanding from this.
That we understand it.
With the understanding that it's going to be used for condos.
As long as we amortize in one way or another. I'll make a motion to recommend changing the zoning.
Yeah, we didn't say under the condition, we said with the understanding, which is.
For condominiums, rezoning, can we say that?
Well, RM.
It's going to be used for condominiums. With the understanding, that way it doesn't, you know.
I think that sounds good.
Ken, did you get that down?
I think so.
You understand what I'm saying, if you say under the condition.
Absolutely.
You know, I'll give you my sunglasses, under the condition, I'm going to return in twenty days. I'll give you my sunglasses with the understanding that you're going to be bringing it back.
Which means, which is, means absolutely nothing, because they could just put up apartments.
But we have it in writing.
We have, we have an understanding from what they've said to us, is that those.
Statewide development ensures those, they're not interested in apartments.
Things change.
I gotta believe them.
I do, I mean, I mean, look what they did already on Bell River, I mean, you can see, I mean, just in the past year, uh, back in twenty twenty of the property that they've already developed. And they're already in the process right now. Yeah, they're here, they're putting money into the city, they're already building these other properties. And they're not even going to be, from one, my understanding is they're not starting the, the other acreage until they've completed the houses that they already have slotted for.
I tried to get them to commit to that and they wouldn't, so.
You understand, like, so he's got a million and a half of infrastructure, he's not going to start spending a million and a half on infrastructure.
Yeah, he's going to finish, he's going to finish these properties here with the infrastructure that he already has in place.
They gotta keep her cash flow.
Instead of, yeah, he's got to keep his cash flow going compared to.
Which seems like it's offered with serve.
I haven't seen the properties over there.
Had that, those sold, had those, any of those sold?
Yeah, one family moved in.
One family's moved in?
Yeah, there's somebody living in one.
And which one's getting basements now, you're trying to say something about basements?
Bell River.
For twenty thousand?
Somebody's paying for the basement.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
So, I don't know if they're waiting for the people to buy a lot and then say that.
Is that how that, is that how that's playing out?
Yeah, sure, they're going to sue you.
From what I understand, back from my late father-in-law, they had their house built, they lived in Warren, they had their house built in Sterling Heights. They had everything picked out for the structure of the house, what type of house it was going to be, how big the basement was going to be, and all the amenities that were going to go with it before the ground was even broken.
That way they put the money up forward, with the houses that they put up on the slabs, those are always like, like, let's get the ball rolling, let's build some houses so we get some cash flow here.
Right, those are the instant builds, but they're also pretty much pre-framed or pre-formed.
They also show us the plans, that they are going to be like this.
I mean, there's lot numbers, there's lot numbers and there's a phone number.
Ken, you want to read that back to me?
People can buy a lot.
Steve, we've heard of motions that the planning commission recommend we change the zoning from R1A to RM with the understanding that they intend to build condominiums.
And I second that.
Do we need to put the, um, plot number in there?
I was going to say, we should include the plot number and statewide management.
And parcel number?
Yeah, I got it right here, you ready?
I, I got that.
As I say, it's, it's all right here in the, uh.
In the, in the.
It's in here.
Actually, it's, it's really good on Larry's.
It's right, and it's right here.
Yeah, Larry's note.
It's right there on parcel number, blah, 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 it's right here on public, what was it, public hearing?
That's on both.
Hey, all in favor?
Um, I don't believe that motion was ever seconded.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed.
I am still abstaining because of my post-rock somebody for this project.
What's your house, though?
Uh, like, two houses down, three houses down.
From?
The, where, the road's going to be.
Within three hundred feet?
Yes.
Oh, so you're north of.
Yes, yep, and I fell within legal notice and that was what started the whole debacle about us not having bylaws and conflict of interest never being defined, so.
So, moving on to unfinished business, I am, um, can we just like scoot up to three and just discuss that as opposed to, um,
Four.
Going over the master plan and the, um.
Do you want to table the master plan?
Table the master plan till the seventeenth. Does anybody make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we table it to the seventeenth for the review of the master plan.
Next one's take.
Yeah, next one's say, to table reviewing the master plan until the seventeenth.
And updating the commercial overlay district.
Updating the like twenty-fourth?
Oh, right, you know what, it is, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth.
Sorry, I had my date.
What about updating the commercial overlay?
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Are we, so, are we, are we moving items one and two to the twenty-fourth then?
Well, right now, we just said the master plan, we, we've not done, um.
Alright, sweet.
Updating the commercial overlay at Lay District.
Oh, it's not the seventeenth.
Language, the language of, for the commercial overlay, right, that's what you're looking at, is this one, uh.
Yeah.
I have it all written, but it wasn't quite acceptable with.
Okay, seventy-second.
I think I would really ask, uh.
They have a motion to table that to the twenty-fourth, to the next meeting.
See if that's good.
Okay.
Maybe I'll do that unless somebody has, has alternative language written, anybody have alternative language?
If you run it by him and he's fine with it, I'm cool with it, that was just my biggest, my biggest concern.
Let me write a little cover letter and ask him and explain to him what, how I think all that would benefit being in there.
Yeah. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, because I haven't seen they wrote those.
H1 and H2 till next meeting.
Now, I'm not putting anything here.
Yeah, so, well, this is.
Yeah, let me see if I can get that out tomorrow.
Which one? And that's going to bring up to the attorney?
Yeah, I'll explain to, to Alan my intent and how I came up with it and ask him if he sees any problems with that.
Legal sweep thing that you took.
Did you see the letter that Donald sent to Francis and he came back and?
On the, uh, conflict of interest.
How legally binding anything on the master plan is.
It's basically the, you know, the, the code of ordinances.
Right. Suggestions, basically, yeah.
Oh, we, you just got, you're discussing that?
The ordinances trump the master plan. Yeah, the master plan is a really good, really, really, really good suggestion.
What was, what was this?
Yeah, what was this?
A letter, I think you guys got it in the last packet, from a question I was asked with the attorney about if there's anything binding in the master plan I would put in, am I overriding ordinances or anything else?
I didn't.
Basically, basically, the ordinances of the charter that are, they supersede the, 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 the master plan. The master plan's like, here's our idea of what we really, really want to do, but binding.
Do you have a copy of it?
Should be in our room, yeah.
I don't know, maybe you can get it in your mail. Because that's, I, that's as far as I, I ever saw was in an email.
Yeah, that's where I wrote it. But that's simply what we're saying.
So, maybe we're, maybe it was, was another one.
The ordinances and the city charter. What rule?
Oh, yeah, because, I mean, the plan, isn't it, the plan is, I keep wanting to call it like a wish list. Like, the plan is.
That's pretty much it.
The plan is like, this is what we would like to see happen. I mean, all this stuff that we've been working on before is just kind of the infrastructure of it here of like, okay, here's where we exist.
Want to see that plan reinforce what is in the ordinances.
Then the second, or third part of it should, is how do we implement these wish lists now?
Or at the least, we don't want any contradictions in the master plan and the ordinances, because that could be a way people could.
But the thing is, is there's gonna be, isn't there, like, if, because if we go through.
If we do it right.
But if we go through and make a wish list and say, well, this is what we, we think it should be. And that's what happened with the commercial overlay. That first master plan as it existed, it said, here's the, um, here's our plan, we need, this should be a commercial overlay. And then it went to council and it, that then got changed.
And that's what it is.
And, and that's what it is, but there's going to be some things, that there's going to be a window that somebody could look at the master plan and say, oh, here's what they want to do. It's not in their plan, it's not in their zoning yet.
Vision for future land use.
Exactly.
It's not, it's not binding.
Right, right, it isn't, it isn't, but it's, it's not a legal, somebody shouldn't have, yeah. I, I'm kind of like, yeah, that wouldn't be binding. But does that cause problems in the past?
No, in my, in my view, it's, the master plan should be sympathetic as much as possible with our city ordinances. And also laying out some future vision for land use and clarifying, you know, a few points that you might want to make about the city in general, which this is full of, you know, facts and figures, population trends.
Right.
Things of that nature, so. But yeah, the, that's why I wanted to have that, uh, commercial overlay language adopted into the ordinance.
Because that was the missing piece to make it clear.
Says the same thing that our master plan says.
Right.
But, well, you know.
And that was, it's one of those, if you rewrite the language for the commercial overlay, that goes to council and that would be adopted in the ordinance.
Which I got all that stuff written up already, so I'll just see what Alan has to say about it, see if he has any suggestions or if he tells me it's a rotten idea, you know, it's a rotten idea. Throw it out, start over. So, bylaws, what do you have?
Okay, bylaws, that came up at the last meeting.
Yes, that did.
And you sent, you sent a question.
You were. I was on last week. It was. Um, so, I.
Got another copy?
Yeah, I've got. So, I was looking for conflict of interest specifically because I got a legal notice and I found an excerpt from the Michigan, uh, the MCL.
This is an excerpt?
Yeah, right.
So, sorry, that is the whole law.
There's a whole bunch of extra in there though, too.
Is this the excerpt right here?
No, it's this.
Oh, here's, here's your two copies of the excerpts. Here's. I found an excerpt from the Michigan law that requires planning commissions to have bylaws. I asked Donna for our bylaws, she told me we didn't have any. And then there was some brief discussion about whether or not the code of ordinances constituted as bylaws, which they do not. Um, so, I, she emailed the lawyer and he was the one who clarified that, um, confirming my suspicion. And he actually sent over us a pair of sample bylaws, but the thing he sent us was the sample bylaws I distributed at last week's meetings. So. Thick, yes. Um, honestly, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there that can be taken out, there's little comments on, you know, this is why this is important, if you're a township, remove this language, stuff like that. But the bylaws are essentially just a document that states all of the laws that we must adhere to, so it'll be a restating of our code of ordinances, um, and any Michigan law that applies to us. And then a agreement of how we shall proceed, uh, what procedure we shall follow for our meetings. You know, if we use, uh, Roberts Rules of Parliament, specifically like what addition? If there are any special changes that we do not follow from Roberts Rules of Parliament, what they are, um, and stuff like that.
She, Doug gave me a copy of Riley Townes, too, I gave him to, uh.
Yes.
It's a little more pages there, that might be of some help if we definitely got a copy of that.
It's a little bit shorter.
Yeah, um, that being said, I am in the process of updating these behemoth of bylaws to be more cohesive with our code of ordinances and, um, you know, obviously, same Memphis instead of Michigan state.
Can you scan that and give me a PDF, we'll get a chance.
This? Yeah, we can do that. I'll put it in that Dropbox, which, did you text everyone the information?
No, I didn't.
I didn't text anybody, if everybody's got a pen, I can, I will give it to you. I think you worked on yours, right? Okay, so, it's good, you go to Dropbox.com.
This is going to be where, at the.
This is where we can share the documents, so if you have a document you want to add to it, you can add a document. That's strictly for the planning commission. And the login for it, when you first log in, it's memphisplanning@currently.com.
And it's all one word or?
It's all one word.
Memphis Planning at what?
Memphis Planning at currently.com.
Currently?
Yeah, like, like I'm currently giving you this information, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, at currently.com. That's the, that's, yeah, all lowercase, that's the main login, um, user, password, I think, did you write it down? Somebody's, my phone, my phone lost it, I don't know how, I was, I've been taking Norcos for like a week and a half, so. Didn't take any today, I'm actually working with a little bit of pain. It is Memphis.
It is capital M.
Yeah, capital.
Can we be recording this?
Memphis or AO?
You're not recording, are you?
Yeah.
It's alright, this ain't going in.
Okay.
You might want to stop, yeah, you got me.
Yeah, see, if I want to go back and leave on that, because we're sharing passwords and logins for a website.
Was that capital?
Sorry.
We're talking about passwords for a website.
Huh? For how long?
Just a couple minutes.
I just pass, I'll just pass it to somebody, so we don't have to say it out loud.
Alright, so.
Already said it.
Yeah, it's already on there, but I didn't give the full password.
Oh, is that?
You didn't give the full password?
Yeah, I didn't give the full password.
So, you're okay then, alright?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
The password was mentioned, so I wrote it down.
Okay.
Right.
And that was just a couple minutes ago, you said?
Yes.
Yeah. Also, uh, when you log into Dropbox, it's going to say that a confirmation email has been sent to So, you go to currently.com, which is basically A-T-A-T Yahoo. And the username is thememphisplanning@currently.com and it's the identical password to Dropbox, everything's the same.
Because you have to get your.
Because you have to get, there's a six-digit, it says enter the six-digit verification code.
Because they're, when you sign in, they're going to ask you for a six-digit code and you're going to have to get that once and twice, you know, whatever. But you're going to have to go to the actual.
You have to go to the actual email and retrieve the code.
At, and that's at Memphis.
Super, super double over.
But anyway, what's going to happen in that Dropbox is that's where our, our plan is going to be. And all the corrections and everything that we've been making on it, so we're going to see the, see the final plan.
Yeah, and then.
Through quite a few years.
And then you go to, are they, just go to mail?
And am I correct in that memphisplanning@currently.com?
Yep.
Is also where we can communicate if we want to do, or people can send things here.
Yeah, if you have, if you have, if you have, uh, residents, if you have any questions for the planning commission, they can email thememphisplanning@currently.com and we can look at that and pull it up.
That'll, that's better.
I like the carrier pigeon, that sounds like an experience.
Same thing, it's Memphis Planning.
I have a computer, takes up the whole garage and just one of the cars.
At currently.com.
I just said the twenty-fourth, I think, or the seventeenth that I had, I think.
User means the login, okay?
The seventeenth is.
BW is the password.
So, you are working, did I agree that you were coming up with something?
Um, I am, I am updating this to be cohesive with our language, that way we could review it.
I know, Kurt, I see you writing down to it, but you want to copy it.
Like what is daunting for us, you know, but.
So, that way, like I said, any one, any one of the planning commission.
Okay, so we're just going to, this is just going to keep.
All the PDF file, like this, like this big huge bunch.
Adopting bylaws that are.
He can scan this as a PDF.
Right, right.
Dropbox, and then you log into Dropbox with the login and it'll say sample bylaws, whatever he names the file. You double-click on it and it'll bring it up into your computer, it'll come and, it'll pull it from the cloud onto the computer.
So, just take scanning that document, it'll turn.
You can scan this document, put it into, you know, save it somewhere as a PDF file on your computer. Then you can cut it from your computer and paste it into Dropbox and upload it and put it in the cloud.
If it isn't in a PDF already like what I just gave Ken, is it possible to scan after the optical recognition or turns it into a PDF?
Yeah, it's what's called scanning, yeah, so you can take this. Yeah.
Don't put your eye on the scanner, don't look directly at the green light.
No, it's actually a bright white light and it hurts. But, uh, yes, you can actually.
Since I was fifty, fifty-eight away from those bright lights, don't go there.
The newer multi-function, the newer multi-function printers, that's why they're called MFCs, multi-function center. You can scan a document, scan it to your computer, scan it to a USB drive, scan it to the cloud, scan it, fax it to somebody, scan it and email it to somebody. Kurt knows all about it because of all the stuff that he does with fifty-eight, he's got a lot of documentation he has to fill out. And it's going to, if you log into it right now into Dropbox when you get home, I said, don't download it as a folder onto your computer, it takes up space. Just go to Dropbox.com, you log into it, you log into the cloud, it says you want to download it as an app, no. And it's all right there and you'll see my, um, uh, my tax certification from tax school from the state for when I was on the review board, that's in there, because I was.
This has picked up, I've got a two terabyte hard drive, what, five.
But this way, if Ken can email us, or somebody can email something, or text, say, hey, check the Dropbox account, I just put something updated in there in regards to the PDF file for the bylaws. And you just log into Dropbox and look at it and say, oh, here it is, here, instead of this. You understand what I'm saying?
All right, so we're just moving on with getting our bylaws together, right?
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the other, anything, right?
No motions on that currently. I'll try and present at next, in two weeks, I'll try and present an updated version of these bylaws. If somebody else finds some bylaws that they like and, you know, wants to present those as well, you can.
Do you like yours?
Yeah, yeah, my compliments to the.
The couple pages, it's very good.
My compliments to the secretary of reports regarding them, because I think makes me understand a lot.
All right, I want to share with y'all.
Is this the new?
We've got a half.
Ah.
From clerk's office. This is the Memphis ad. This is all voting. So, these are the parcel orders, so you can see wherever we, I'm trying to get that all from St. Clair, I haven't got there yet, but so every single one, if we want to really verify what piece of land we're talking about, what the zoning is, we can get pretty specific.
Well, this is really good.
Can you tell me which one's there?
Yeah, you'd have to kind of zoom it. Now, do you have this in a PDF?
No, I, somebody just made, made this for me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because, you know, it's one of those.
Here's, here's the parcel we're talking about right here, so we're wanting to reference.
That's the thing, is you go to, to St. Clair County or McComb County and their GIS, and, and look at this, where you can, like.
That's what I'm saying, is there a way that we can get like a hard copy, we can put this in Dropbox where we could, or, we can use a projector on the next meeting and go.
I'm gonna be going down there again, down the seventh floor of the new county building.
Okay.
Because I wanted to ask if they could put the dimensions of the lots to, so they have the capability of doing that down, ask me about that.
It's one of those, if you get into the.
Well, yeah, here's all the, you know, the lots they cut.
It adds all that information.
There's the three existing houses, that's my, my house here, that's my little neighbor, I'm right at the foot of Bell River, but, so eventually, you know, if we have one of these, we can use it, color rim, color pencils, whatever we want to do, so.
Cool.
If I get St. Clair, we'll have this, and it's, we'll have future work.
So you said, it's one of those where I started looking at the map, and I talked to Stephen like, Leslie about it, it's like, you know, just in the map that we've been looking at, saying, oh, this is right, but if you go out to the northern town, you've got Tom Kuz's place where he's got, yeah, I don't know, it's like five acres or whatever in the city, and it shows it being zoned as industrial, it's not, it's residential. Next to it is the t-shirt shop, across it, the 13 acre shows it being zoned as, as industrial.
This is the showing zone.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, is, that's, like I said, what I did is, I went on and looked and brought the numbers up, because I had questions about them, and that's where I actually talked to Amber and said, hey, look up this parcel, what's its, what does it mean tax dance?
Right.
So it's like, you know, the 13 acres, that's text as residential, you know, Kuz's place is residential, the t-shirt shop is industrial, so it's one of those, like, you know, we make sure that at least our color coding on our map is correct. And I've got to spend a little bit of time looking at it, and it's one of those, just kind of, kind of playing, going, okay, just out of my head, saying, this is right, this is right, this is right, this is right, wait, this is a question mark.
Yeah, I did work with something that I'm using that, that map, or, I wrote that to-do list on page 46 or whatever, this is on the northern end of town, but I did this just off of.
Like this, it's, it's showing this is light industrial.
So these, these are the numbers, like, that are on our, in our, in our master plan now, and how they correspond to A Street.
So this is residential, this is light industrial, and most of this is all is residential.
And we should be able to pin that down by that number.
Right.
And this one corresponds to that lot, and this one. Oh, this one's that lot, this one to that lot.
So that map's almost right, and will be our existing.
Well, I just make sure that we, that we know what number we're talking about for these parcels when we get there, which we're, we're gonna leave those, or that's going to be industrial amount, right?
Yeah, that's residential. That was, that was.
Oh, one light industrial.
Right, that's wrong, that is the wrong zoning for that. This is the wrong zoning for this piece, it's shown on the map.
Going off that.
That's what I'm saying, this, this map is incorrect.
Right, because it also, we vacated these two streets, didn't we?
No.
They were never vacated?
No, no, and that's the ongoing thing where I've had.
So are we measuring here?
Where we've vacated them, because vacating them is somewhat of a sticky booger that talking apart, is if we vacate these streets, we could lose money from the county.
So did that get changed?
What is, what is over here right now?
Nothing, that's the ballpark.
Oh, that's the ballpark, right?
Yeah, you know, it's like, this is Jason Sofa's place, this is the house next to him, this is two different houses.
There's big wide grassy areas you can walk through, you can walk through.
Yeah, well, technically, no.
So there's nothing here?
I mean, it's, it's, it's somebody's yard, it's somebody's yard. I mean, it's for a while there, you know, next to Johnny's place, people were parking to watch the ballgame, because it was a street, they're parking in their yard.
Yeah.
So, per se.
While we get that page, then.
I mean, if you, if you want to go look in the old plat, I mean, this is actually all platted out as streets throughout here, like a subdivision. If you get into the, the map and you want to look at it, where I'm looking here, downtown here, okay?
Right.
This is platted out as streets, here, actually, I'm, I'm in between here, this is actually platted out as Lincoln Street, and this is another street.
Oh, that's the gas station.
The gas station.
Oh, no, wait, that's City Hall, that's Union right there.
This is the gas station right here.
Okay, yeah.
This is City Hall over here.
Okay.
But this is platted out, if you, you know, you take and you look at a blown up section of this in the old plat map, you know, the, the alleyway that goes up behind, between the city hall and the, the winery.
Yeah.
This is Lincoln Street.
Nice, okay.
You know, then, that, what's, what's an alley that's not an alley now, that was listed as a street.
Well, you go, it's kind of like an alley.
So you're saying that this is residential right now, because that was changed to residential because of those condominiums?
Right, so this, well, it was changed to residential multiple, yes.
And we changed it back to residential?
Well, it might be residential multiple, but it's not light industrial, how about that? It's not light industrial.
We just want to show that in our plan, how it really exists, yeah.
Exactly.
Shows the spacing for the roads here, but I don't see any there.
Well, that's what I'm trying to determine, is what, whatever we say is, what we put it in for the updated master plan.
Isn't that what the lawyer said, no, it would be our code of ordinances and stuff?
Oh, no, well, but we shouldn't put a false map in there.
No, but he was saying if we make an error, it doesn't legally change the parcel.
No.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Well, in the master plan, not, not the ordinances contradict that.
Right.
I don't know if we have that kind of specific information in the ordinances, but it shows a description of what each zone is, but, yeah, not, because I guess it's always changing, because like this.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it could change.
So that's what we need to determine, is do we like this one, or do we want to change something on this, and then we update this, that'll go into the current master plan that's gonna be adopted eventually, so.
I think, yeah, as long as that could be all updated, it's.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're supposed, that's our, our job, I guess, at this point.
Yep.
And then to the city council, and see if they agree, that we'll present all the stuff that we found, and then take it from there.
It's just a vision, though.
It's a vision.
Well, this particular one is not, this is the, if we want the most current.
The master plan, I'm saying, is a vision.
Oh, yeah, the master plan, but this chapter of the master plan is what exists in Memphis right now, what is it right now? And so we just need the map of what the zoning looks like now. Then maybe we'd have a map later on that would say, oh, here's what we think it probably should be.
Yeah, this is the as-is right now.
But that, we just need the as-is one.
That's our most current PDF file, 2015, and so, it's not, we don't have to stay with it, but that's.
It's just a draft.
Just a reference.
Just a draft.
Right.
And that's, I would just.
Well, it was adopted, though, it might say draft on there, but this is the same map that appears in this.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not a draft in here, because it was adopted.
We put address all inquiries to this piece of property right here, just not put a knock down the door.
We'll put a star.
No, email to.
As long as you don't put it on this piece.
I'm just thinking.
It'd be crossing the street in front of you anytime you see it, huh?
Because you were, you made this to put, right, did you make that?
Oh, yeah.
Tom.
Tom printed this.
I, I printed it.
Print it out together, that if we're gonna, to go with this, just.
Yeah, if you look at the map.
Just saying if we can make the colors more contrasting.
The one that they had in the.
Yeah, I tried to.
They look at.
You know how many times I printed this before?
This is correct, this is correct.
And I had to like hide every piece and shred it before anybody saw it.
Who saw it, which you were doing?
Yeah, because in our plotter, it's probably about a $25, $30,000 plotter, that we use for.
You can all that.
And I'm sitting there using.
Using a, I, I.
$300, $400 rolls of paper to print out a zoning map.
You know I'm recording, right?
I'm telling you, but it's gotta be covered.
What? Didn't hear that, that's okay.
I'm just glad you. So you know, if I cut something out of here, I have to actually put it on the video that I edited something. I can't edit a video of a meeting.
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine.
Well, I'm just saying, you're saying I'm fine, but you asked me to edit the video earlier, I can't edit a public meeting.
I know.
It's a violation, okay.
Yeah, you said, I didn't say the whole master, it's a.
Right, no, just so we know.
You're good, you're good.
Comments? I have no comments.
Ain't gonna have.
Do you have any comments?
No, I have no comments.
Any more comments?
Both your adjournments.
Second to me, I'll show you adjournments.
Aye, aye, aye.